Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting, and special committee of the whole meeting. The microphones are on, the television cameras are rolling. We begin our city council meeting with the pledge of allegiance. And I would like to ask Coach Wilson and the entire Geneva High School Robotics Team to please lead us in the pledge.
You want to do robotics?
Yeah. Oh yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, we'll do that after, what the heck.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And whatever you're writing, madam, we'll take the role. It's my fault there, sorry about that.
That's okay, I'll do that now. Bowring, here.
Bruno?
Here.
Ruby?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Casarag? Maladra?
Here.
Marx? Mayor? Tashki?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
Item 3A, folks, is to welcome, learn from, be in awe of the Geneva High School Robotics Team. And we have Coach Mr. Wilson with us tonight. I'm going to yield the floor to you. I assume you probably have a few comments to make, or do you want the students to lead this? Oh my goodness, this is going to be great. Who are our student speakers tonight? All of you, well then heck, come on up. All I ask is that you introduce yourself, use your first and last name, let us know what year you are in high school, whether you've graduated. If you have graduated, where you're going to school next year. Sound good?
Sounds great.
Thanks for your enthusiasm.
Hi. Good evening, we are the Geneva High School Robotics Team, otherwise known as the RoboVikes. My name is Soren Larsson, and I will be a senior this year.
My name is Alex Kellick. I just graduated, and I'm going to U of I for physics.
Timeout. Alex, is it... This is just a shot in the dark here, but are you related to anyone here on the dais?
Yeah, my mom's the city clerk.
I'm not going to say anything.
You can't say anything.
Can't say anything.
My name is Nick Favoda, and I recently graduated, and I'm going to Bradley University.
What are you studying at Bradley?
Mechanical engineering.
Of course you are. There you go.
My name is Reva Kakadi, and I just graduated, and I'm going to UIC for biomedical engineering.
Fantastic.
I'm Caitlin Schlyer, and I'm an incoming senior.
Welcome.
Alright, so who are we? Well, to put it simply, we're a group of about fifteen to twenty-five students working together to build an one-hundred-and-twenty-pound robot. Established in two thousand and nine, we compete in competitions and hone our skills. But that's just the tip of the iceberg. Our team is more like a family, and we don't just create a robot. We dedicate ourselves to build, design, test, and program the best possible robot that we can make. In robotics, one of the key aspects of our team is that we're a hundred percent student-run, meaning we're the ones teaching our new members, reaching out to local companies, fundraising, and of course, the actual manufacturing of the robot. Because we're a hundred percent student-run, it also means we struggle a lot more. We're not given any tips or instructions, so we're forced to figure it out on our own.
But with all due respect, though, what parents would understand what you understand?
Whenever we have a question, we just look it up on Google.
Do you... There you go, that's the honesty we're looking for.
Usually takes a couple hours to figure it out, though, so... Since two thousand and nine, we've been constantly improving our skills, marking down what works, and more importantly, what doesn't work. We experiment and learn, not only to make a better robot, but to improve our own skills and knowledge, with the intention of taking what we learned here and using it in the future. To briefly explain why we're here tonight, we have a few goals we hope to achieve. To start, we want to give a brief overview of who we are and what our team is about. Moving on, we want to introduce first and explain what FRC is and its importance. Then we're going to give a brief overview of our competition season, followed up by a demonstration of our two thousand and twenty-three robot. Afterwards, we hope to share our mission statement and all details following. And finally, we will explain how our team hopes to participate in the community and gain financial and educational support from our community members. First, which stands for Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology, is an organization that coordinates international competitions and works to give students STEM skills and experience required to build their own future. FIRST is split into three different groups. FLL, which stands for First LEGO League, is for any students in elementary school and middle school. FTC, or First Tech Challenge, is the next level up, and it's for any students grade seven through twelve. FRC, which stands for First Robotics Competition, is also an international competition for any high school students. In FRC, you're given roughly three months to manufacture a robot to compete in an international competition. This is the highest level of robotics competition, and it is also what we compete in. To explain FIRST a bit further, they have two main ideals which really encompass the FIRST ideology. The FIRST, which was established by Dean Kamen, the founder of FIRST, and also the segue, who helped to establish the idea of co-operation. Co-operation is quite simply cooperating with the competition. It's one of the unique aspects of FIRST Robotics. Cooperation allows teams to share knowledge and parts and give assistance without diminishing any thrill of the competition. The other key component of FIRST Robotics is gracious professionalism. Gracious professionals are said to learn and compete like crazy, but still treat one another with respect and kindness in the process. With this mentality, FIRST creates an environment where every team is treated equally. The combination of both co-operation and gracious professionalism makes every competition not only extremely fun and social, but also an amazing learning experience, while maintaining an intense competitive spirit. That intense competitive spirit is also what makes the actual competition season so exciting. So to explain our competition season a bit further, here's Alex Kellick.
Hello. So, through this program, we get to learn incredibly useful and varied skills for our future. Of course, we do build a robot, so we get to learn a lot of things like design and engineering skills. We use CAD, which is computer-aided design, where we make the whole robot in a 3D environment. We also use manufacturing tools like CNC machines that can cut extremely precise metal parts for us. We learn construction as we build the robot and make game pieces to test with, and we get to learn incredibly cool programming and electronics to bring it all together. We also have to be thinking strategically the entire time, not just at competition, because we have to know what other teams are going to be doing and what we can do to stand out. We also learn a lot of things outside of building a robot. The whole experiment... The whole experience takes a lot of teamwork. You can't create a one-hundred-and-twenty-pound robot by yourself. So, we have to manage our budget and time, because those are both very limited. So we also do a lot of fundraising and marketing, and we learn negotiating skills, and we're trying our best to help improve our community. I can say from personal experience that I have learned so much these past four years. I started programming when I was a freshman, and now I'm hoping to do more with it in college. FRC, everyone in it is always so amazing and supportive, and I've really been able to open up to them and gain a lot of confidence in myself. So within our team, the way it's set up is that we have four sub-teams. So they are administrative, design, build, and code. So administrative does things like marketing fundraisers, newsletters that we send to our sponsors, graphic design, setting up events. They do basically everything on the business side of things. The design team takes our ideas and makes them into something you can actually look at, because they make the CAD model. And so they have to work very closely with the build and code teams to make sure that everything actually works together, which is pretty important when you're building a robot. So build team actually builds the robot. They assemble the whole thing, they also make a lot of custom parts. They use a lot of cool machinery, and it's nearly all done from scratch every year. So they put a lot of work into that. And then I am on code team, and fundamentally, it's programming and electronics. But I can say we do so much more than that. It's... There's a lot of online tools. We have to manage and learn on the fly very quickly. We have to keep code up to date, and we have to get all our electronics working, which brings the whole thing together and make it actually work. So then Nick is going to talk about our season this year.
Hi, Nick.
Hello. The year for the robotics team is split into three main categories: the preseason, the build season, and then competitions. Preseason is the time from the end of our competitions, usually about late April, to the beginning of the next build season, which starts in early January. This is the time when we want to make sure that all of the new members are learning skills that they'll need for the next build season. So like, if you're going to be on code team, you need to learn how to program, obviously. Or if you're going to be on build team, you might need to learn how to use a drill, or how to measure properly, or how to use a CNC machine. And then design would definitely learn CAD. And then during this time, there are also preseason competitions, which are fundamentally a small-scale version of the previous year's competition. And these are a great way for new students to get into the competition mindset and see how it... See what everything actually looks like before getting to the real deal later in the year. After the preseason, in early January, the competition is released, and what we like to do is begin with strategizing. So we want to... This isn't when we're designing parts or making our robot or anything. This is when we're just figuring out how we want to play the game. So like, this year, we had to pick up cones and cubes and put them in various locations. So we had to figure out if we wanted to pick up both, if we wanted to pick up one, if we wanted to play defense, just what our robot was fundamentally going to do. And then once we have an idea of how we want to play, then we move into design and prototyping, where we actually come up with ideas for parts and actually create them. And then, once we actually have ideas that we like, we get into building and programming, where everything actually comes together to make the entire robot. Once the robot is completely together, then we can move into actually testing everything and make sure that everything works together, and figure out if there are any tweaks we need to make to make sure that everything is functioning as best as it can. And then, usually, late March, early April is when our first competitions are. And this is where we see if everything we're just working on for the last three months works or crashes and burns. Hopefully not the second one. We generally compete in Chicago at the Midwest Regional. And in this year, we were in Milwaukee for the Wisconsin Regional. But in the past, we've also been in Peoria for the Central Illinois Regional. And these competitions are extremely important, because if you win the competition, you get to go to the world championships and compete to become the best robot out of the several thousand teams there are throughout the world. Our team has been yet to make it to that level, but we've been getting close the past couple years with several playoff runs, and we hope to get there soon. So now, stick with us for a moment as we set up our robot demo. So the... As they're working on that, the general idea for this year's game, as I kind of mentioned before, was there were posts that we had to put cones on, and you'd get more points based on how high you could get the cone. So it's sort of like a three-tier system. And it's the same thing for cubes on a shelf. Here are the posts, and then the shelves will be coming in. But for the early game, you want to make sure that you're scoring as many things as you can. And if you get three in a row, almost like tic-tac-toe sort of, then you'll get bonus points. So you want to make sure you're completing as many lines as you can. And then closer to the end of the game, we weren't able to bring it unfortunately, but we have basically a big scale. And if you get a robot to bounce on it, you'll get points for that. And the more robots you get on it, the more points you can get. So it was always really impressive to see three robots get on there. Oh, so each team has a number that's associated with it. It's basically like an identification number. So we... There are teams up to about the eight-thousand, middle eight-thousands right now. So you can see we're pretty early on there. It's kind of fun when you're walking through the pits, because everything is just labeled by numbers. So most of the time, you won't like address another team with their team name. It's like, no one comes up to us and says, "Hey, RoboVikes, here's what we need from you." Everyone's always running around yelling out random numbers, so got to keep your ears open for that. Once the robot connects here, we'll get it going.
Has there... During a demonstration, has there ever been a fatality? For example, I'm sitting right next to this.
Hopefully not.
There's no... There's no response!
I had to think. There's been a couple of close calls, not during... Not during like a demonstration, but testing. We've had some... Some... Some fun things happen.
This jacket's from JCPenney, so I got to get this thing back by tonight, so don't...
It shouldn't get that close.
No, thank you, sir. No, you don't know who JCPenney is, do you?
I'm not that young. I've seen it.
I almost said Garanimals, but that's a stretch, so...
Oh, here we're going.
You know, I find that fascinating, that you identify... You refer to other teams by their number only. Is that a... Is that an element of respect and impartiality, or is that just how it evolved?
A lot of the times in the pits, you're trying to like get stuff done quick. There's always people working on the robot, people running around. And since a big part of the game is strategizing and figuring out how you want to play, because it's like a three-on-three with two teams, you need to decide which of your three robots is going to be doing what, is going to be where, at what times. So just for the sake of speed, most people use team numbers.
Interesting.
Okay, I think we're good.
It's a two-man... What is the surface during competitions? Similar? It's carpet? Like a shag?
More like, like the school carpet.
Oh, ugh!
Soren, you got this.
Did you really?
Yeah. But they drain the batteries, so it can't have them on when the robot's running.
Well, I could've told you that, man.
Okay, so our team's mission and goals. Our team's mission is to promote STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math, and the FIRST values throughout our community, which include co-operation and gracious professionalism. We want to promote our mission by expanding our program within Geneva High School and extending it to the middle and elementary schools. One way we've done this in the past is that we've made a ball launcher for a student with a disability at the middle school, so that he can... He can take part in the PE class. We also want to find new ways to give back to our community, like volunteer opportunities. With our FIRST and STEM values and the support of our community, we would love to share experiences and knowledge and use it to help our community. We want to show our community that this team is more than a bunch of high schoolers building a robot. We're a commet... We are a connected community, and we want to be more involved with ours. Many towns nearest, including St. Charles, Naperville, and Arlington Heights, have robotics teams that are nationally known and have been world champions in the past. We want to join them in these accomplishments, which we can do with your help. And speaking from my personal experience, this team is one of the best groups of people to be around, and I can't wait to see what they accomplish with your help. And now here's Caitlin to explain our yearly budget, which helps us accomplish these things.
Hi, Caitlin.
Hi. So robotics is a very expensive thing. Each team spends around twenty to thirty thousand dollars each season, and it's very hard to have a successful season if you spend under twenty-three thousand dollars. Entrance fees alone cost ten thousand dollars, and then travel is another large expense. But one of the most important expenses that we have is spending on replacement parts and new parts to build our robot. We try to combat this with a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar team fee per member, and fundraisers that... But they only tend to raise us about a hundred dollars each time. I talked to a few of the teams at our last competition, and some are more fortunate than us, raising and spending over one-hundred thousand dollars just last season alone. Since we're not able to spend as much as them, a lot of the cost comes down on the families of our team. Many of the sponsors of our team are companies and businesses that our parents are a part of. And without a grant from the Geneva Academic Foundation and a few generous donations from these parents, we would not have been able to afford our season last year. There are a lot of ways that the community can help us, and they don't all include money. We're always looking for ways to give back to our community and spread our values as our team and promote STEM. For example, the ball launcher we constructed was one of those great opportunities, and we also run a summer camp each summer for the middle school students. We also need a lot more mentors to provide support, advice, guidance, and safety to our team. Although they don't build the robot, they help us to make sure we're on the right track, and we can always ask them questions if we have any. What we really need is funding from our local sponsors that will help us... Help connect us to the community and make sure our team sticks around for years to come. One of our sponsors, Smith &amp; Richardson. We love going to their warehouse and seeing all of their machines and picking up any parts that they have. And we are also sponsored by Continent Envelope in our community. We also have a wish list on our website for any materials that we need for our season. So if you... If you don't need... If you don't want to donate money, we also could definitely use those parts. Thank you so much for listening. We're all very hopeful that this will be an opportunity that will help our team stick around for years to come and get our team more involved in the community. With that, if anyone has questions right now, feel free to ask them.
Nope, no questions, thanks, have a good night. First, I have two questions. How long did this take to build?
So the... Our competition season is three months, but we unfortunately had to scrap our robot and start over. And so this robot, we built in about ten days.
Really? And forgive me for my lack of knowledge, but is this all built at the high school?
Yes.
It is?
We have a workspace near the woods room in our high school that we store all of our stuff and we build all our stuff in.
So the CNC machine, all that stuff's there?
Yes, yes.
Okay, got it. And it's my understanding that robots often have names.
Yes.
Is that name allowable for FCC rules to be shared on television?
Of course. So our robot is named Valkyrie. It's like after the Vikings. That's just... We name our robot every year, but Valkyrie was the one that was this year.
What were previous names?
Our robot from before, we named Wade.
Wade? Any reason?
So it's an acronym for Wheels and Duct Tape Everywhere?
That's awesome.
This robot is a lot more technically challenging than Wade, but we still love him.
And there's reference earlier in the presentation regarding one-hundred-and-twenty pounds. Can a robot not exceed that amount?
No.
And if it does, and you've miscalculated, what happens at a competition?
So they go through a list to make sure your robot is safe to compete. And if you're over one-hundred-and-twenty thou... Or, sorry. If you're over one-hundred-and-twenty pounds, they... You can't compete until you're under, so...
You got to take off those LEDs, man. Wow. Open to the council for comments or questions of all of you. Oh, Mr. Bruno, sir. This will be good, because this guy knows what you're doing here.
Well, I was going to say, I'm an engineer, but I don't think I can mentor you. But so you talked about fundraising. I think you should say your website for the millions of people watching if they want to go to it.
So that QR code is to our website, and you can find our wish list there. Also, just typing in the URL, watch as well. And then our email is right below that if you want to get in contact with us.
And the... I take it there's a new challenge every year, or is it the same?
Yes, it's a new challenge every year, released in January, and then we have three months to build it until we compete.
So you can't like take this and tweak it for the following year?
You're not supposed to.
Notice how that question was answered.
And the... The equipment, the CNC, that's just gratis from the school? Or do you have to rent that, or...
Yeah, we got it from Mr. Wilson.
Very good. Thank you very much, very impressive. I really enjoy the route that you're on, and go STEM.
Mr. Kilburg?
I'm sure that you're involved in other extracurricular activities at the high school, and that this is only a part of it. And it would seem that you're all very good students to be a part of this. But what are some of the other things that you're involved with?
I play the cello in our school's pit orchestra, and also in the orchestra.
Good.
Same thing for me, but violin.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I don't play an instrument, but I do do soccer and ultimate frisbee.
Good.
I'm also an ultimate frisbee, and I sing in choir.
I don't do much else, but I have a lot of like community stuff, like key club, and then there's the scrubs club, too.
Great. And there's other students here tonight. I would... We would love to meet the other students who are with us.
Yeah.
Share with us your name, your year in school. This guy. This guy. This guy's the robot.
Hello, I am Alex Favoda. I am Nick's brother. I'm also going to Bradley University for mechanical engineering. I... And I was the driver for this robot and the previous robot as well. And then the clubs I'm in, obviously, this one, there's Alpine Club, Ultimate Frisbee. I was on a hockey team. I was part of Aces. What's the... Do I... Is there any other ones? I can't think of any. IDEA is another one's... I didn't do skills. Yeah. We are... It's not just robotics, all of these... A lot of us actually do a lot of different things.
Of course.
Even though this does take up a lot of our time, we still find ways to do other things. And it's a lot... Very fun thing to do.
Thank you very much.
I'm Kayden Ventus, and this year I am a junior. I'm going to be a senior next year. And I helped around with testing and a little bit of building the robot, and... Wherever I could help, I tried to.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
I'm Declan Ventus, and I'm a sophomore. I just helped build a little bit.
Not a little bit, man. I'm sure that you do a lot. Thank you for being with us.
I am William Boyer. I just graduated. I'm going to Purdue University for mechanical engineering technology. Officially, I am the assistant design captain. In practice, it's more I work on build team, building this year's robot and last year's.
When do you ship out for school?
I leave August 12th, I start around August 16th.
Wow.
I'm Ben Bond. I am a sophomore. I am going to be next year's assistant build captain. And robotics is really the only club I am involved in.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Bond. Mr. Bond?
I'm Colin Diamond. I'm going to be a sophomore next year, and also next year's assistant code captain. I play tennis, do the cello, and I'm also in German club.
In German club?
Yes.
No kidding?
Hi, I'm Miles Shepherd. I'm going to be a sophomore next year. I help out. So next year, I'm going to be the head of all the administrative, business-related stuff. I also take all the photos for the team of... At the competitions and everything, so most of the photos...
Because you have your own business?
Yeah, related to photography.
And what's your business called?
Miles Shepherd Photography.
Very creative?
Yeah. Hey, I went like three hours with the names, best thing I can come up with. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Real fast. So one thing I want to mention, we mentioned before that we don't like tinker this robot for the next competition.
Of course.
However, sometimes we do have to take off parts and use them for all the robots. So for instance, we have something on there that is what moves it around. It's called swerve drive. Basically, you have two motors.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. One moves it, one turns to the other. It's like a caster wheel on like chairs, but motorized. We also have a bunch of motors on here, so all the... They're called Falcon Motors. We have about twelve of them. And then one Neo. All the Falcon Motors themselves cost about like two-hundred dollars per motor, so, you know. And then the swerve drive costs a lot of money, too. So that's one of the things with any financial support we get, we don't have to take as much off, because it is... And also, all the metal. It is... Metal is not cheap, it's very expensive. So a lot of the... Any financial support we get, most of it goes to getting new supplies like that. So we don't need to take stuff off of the robot that we already have.
Got it. I noticed that there's some logos on the robot.
Yes.
So this is like quasi-NASCAR?
So...
Like if, for example, Mr. Burns gave you a thousand bucks, you'd put his image on there?
Yes. We would CNC it on there just for that.
You want his cellphone number?
We... Um, we, depending on, so we have a tier list for sponsors and it ranges. So sometimes it can be as much as just a website listing to, we'll put their logo on the actual robot itself. So we have a couple of companies on there who have donated a significant amount, including Encore?
Yeah.
Encore, the Humky Group.
Turn around, I'm packing your shirt.
Oh, yeah. Geneva Apic, Apic Foundation.
Yeah, turn around, we're wearing your shirt, man.
So they also go on your, on our shirts, as you can see. So that definitely helps a significant amount.
Of course.
To get any financial support.
Well, I've got some leads for you with respect to sponsorship, so we'll.
Yeah, anything is appreciated.
We'll visit afterward.
Even if it's not financial support, I think Caitlin was mentioning, any sort of donation of parts or mentorship, knowledge, anything like that is just extremely useful to our team.
Would parts from a 1989 Dodge van be of assistance? Answer the question, Soren.
We, we have been looking for a robotics sponsorship van. Maybe not.
Well said.
But we can use just about any part, including a Dodge car.
Now, I'm gonna single you out, because I was told by Mr. Wilson and you admitted that you like to travel the world. You like, you're going to Colorado, you're going to Germany?
I think everybody likes to travel the world.
Well, yeah, don't interrupt. So you like to, where are you going next?
Um, I'll be going to Colorado in a couple of days.
And then off to Germany later in the summer?
And then off to Germany. We have a foreign, uh, we had a foreign exchange student who will be going to visit.
That's very cool.
Very exciting.
Well, this has been a waste of our time, so I don't understand any of this stuff, man. It's awesome. Can council open for comments of any of the students or coach or anyone? Coach Wilson, you have my cell. Be, feel free to share with the students. I have some leads with respect to some sponsorship opportunities, so.
We also, when we say financial support, it can mean anything.
He's coaching you over there. Are you playing the role of Mrs. Reagan? What are you doing?
She whispers into my ear. I just say what she says. It can be anything, honestly, from like $20 to like a couple thousand, so, well, anything is helpful.
Crypto? Really good at the spokesperson stuff, aren't you?
He could be mayor's.
Yeah. Very good. Okay.
You guys are fantastic. We're very, very proud of you. We thank you very much for spending part of your evening with us. We're looking forward to cheering you on. Mr. Wilson, you and I will be in touch afterward. And if there's nothing else, you guys, get that thing. Thank you very much.
For that comment.
And moms and dads, thank you very much. I'm certain that this is a, possibly an exhaustive process for you as well, so thank you for the leadership you show your students and your kids. Next up is the Naperville Robotics Team. We'd like to. Now I gotta apologize to the mayor of Naperville for saying that. Amendments to the agenda, are there any amendments this evening by the council? The omnibus agenda? Item five, all items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council. Those items can be considered in one motion. Is there such a motion?
So moved. Second.
Alderperson Bowring. Alderperson Pachke. Look at that, beat out the engineer. Madam clerk, please take the roll. I'm sorry, Alex's mom, please take the roll.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Pachke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Item five, the omnibus agenda has been approved by this council. We jump to item number 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to please read the bills in their aggregate.
Municipal bills for payment total $4,600,484.63.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's city council packet on the city website.
The motion by Alderperson Bruno is to approve the bills as presented, which are available in our packets and on the city's website. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Alderperson Kilburg makes the second. Madam clerk, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Pachke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
With the vote of eight in the affirmative, zero negative, and two absent, the bills have been authorized for payment. This includes a $2 million gift to the Geneva Robotics Team. It's seven, excuse me, seven. Yeah, sorry about that. I've got the stem, you guys aren't following along? We jump down, ladies and gentlemen, to item 13, public comment and new business. First and foremost, public comment. Anyone joining us tonight would like to address the council on any matter of importance to them. You are free to do so. We invite you to the podium and please just share your name. Mr. Rule?
That was a tough act to follow. I, I, just as a side note, years ago, I sat on the technology advisory board for the high school and I'm glad to see it has gone somewhere. So congratulations. Reason I'm here tonight, just to advance where we've been, I missed the last meeting. I apologize. You guys in writing and verbally have said that I should address my questions to Sedgwick as regard to my tree, or your tree. And so on June 14th, I sent an email to Chelsea Freeman at Sedgwick and basically informed her what the arborist determined what was the cause of the tree going down. Her response was, quote, "The windstorm caused the tree to fall and the city of Geneva does not control the wind." There was no mention of the health of the tree, but even though that she said at the beginning that the tree was in good condition, and we now know that it wasn't, but apparently that's not an issue anymore. I then followed up with an email and I had a series of questions with no response. And so what I'm really trying to find out is that, my background is also in engineering, okay? When, when there is a failure, you have to get down to the root cause, okay? You just can't say the wind blew the tree down. You have to get to the root cause. How do you do that? You make observations, you collect data, you document, you consider all the angles. You look at the environmental issues. You're accurate in your calculations. In short, you do your homework. You can't just arbitrarily say the wind blew the tree down. It's like an onion. You gotta peel it back a layer at a time and get to the root cause. On that same day, I tried to call Ms. Freeman, only to get her voicemail. I repeated that, that call several times for several days, sometimes twice a day, only to find out that she was probably hiding behind her voicemail. I then asked you city officials to prompt her to please call me, which she finally did. What I wanted to ask her was, basically since she's, quote, said the wind blew the tree down, I said, I wanted to ask her, I said, "So the condition of the tree is no longer an issue?" That's, that's one thing I wanted to ask her. I, I wanted to confirm that nobody from Sedgwick, Argonaut, or the city officials had been to observe the site. I wanted to ask her if she'd seen the pictures. I wanted to ask her, uh, to confirm that, that her, her statement that the tree was in good condition was based on a five-year-old drive-by survey, which it was. I just wanted to confirm that. Regarding the wind itself, I wanted to ask if the city in fact did have storm damage. I wanted to ask if she knew which direction the wind was blowing at the time. I wanted to ask if she knew in which direction the tree fell down. I wanted to ask her, under what conditions would the wind not have been a factor? In other words, was 40 miles an hour wouldn't have been a factor, 30, 20, 10? I wanted to ask those questions. I wanted to ask if there were any leaves on the tree, if she was, if she knew that. I wanted to ask her if she actually knew what the actual wind speed was at 2307 Clover Lane at 8:01 a.m. on the 5th of November. I wanted to ask her if she'd studied the geographical location. In other words, was this out in the open? Was it a residential area? Were there other houses, trees, other natural windbreaks that could affect the wind conditions? I wanted to ask her if there are other trees in the immediate area that went down. As a side note, my house sits in the middle of a residential area. That's roughly 40 years old. It's surrounded by two-story houses, mature trees, fences, and other objects that are natural windbreaks. So that has an effect on how the tree's gonna react. I wanted to ask her why she thought the tree went down when, in fact, when it went down, it hit a neighboring tree in my front yard and that tree didn't go down, even though it was subject to the same wind conditions. Here's how the conversation went. By the way, I'm assuming she recorded the conversation. I know I did. I don't know if you have a transcript of it or not, but anyway, when I asked her if the city had storm insurance, when I asked her if the city had storm insurance, her response was the city had liability insurance. Not what I asked you. I asked you if the city had storm insurance. She didn't respond. I wanted to confirm, I wanted to ask her if the city officials did not look at the site or Sedgwick did not look at the site. She wouldn't answer that question. She kept saying, "I'm not gonna respond to your question." I wanted to ask, I asked her, I said, "You made your determination based on this five-year-old drive-by survey?" No response. She didn't seem to know what direction the wind came from. She didn't know what, seemed to know which direction the tree fell. I asked her point blank, I said, "What wind speed would not have been a factor, 20, 30, 40 miles an hour?" She had no, no answer for that, did not want to discuss it. When I asked, this, I almost chuckled at this. When I asked her if the tree had leaves on it, her response is, "What difference does that make?" It makes a lot of difference. There was no, little bit of no resistance on a tree that had those leaves. I asked her if she studied the wind current and, and other housing in the area and other trees that would create windbreaks in the immediate area. And her response was, "I'm not gonna discuss it and we're not paying," that's a quote, "and we're not paying," and ended the phone call. In short, she did not do her homework, guys. She made no observations personally. She collected inaccurate data. Her documentation was a five-year-old drive-by survey and a generalized report for the National Weather Service. She did not consider any other windbreaks in the area. She made no, no calculations. Again, you can't just say the wind blew the tree down. The tree went down not necessarily as a consequence, the, the wind was, was, was just a catalyst. It was a straw that broke the camel's back. That's not what brought the tree down. The tree was going to come down. It was just, it was, it was the straw that broke the camel's back. The tree was not in good condition. And quite frankly, I don't, I, it doesn't matter to me if, if this, if it was the wind or what, but city is responsible for the condition and the health of that tree. Not me, not God. You guys are responsible for that tree and the tree was not in good condition. So in summary, guys, just to back up a little bit, I was asked to fill out an instant report. I was asked to get quotes. To date, I filed eight Freedom of Information Act requests. You've asked for extensions on each one of those, which I have granted, which tells me one of two things. One, you're dragging your feet, or two, is you spent a heck of a lot of time on these things and a lot of resources. You directed my questions to Sedgwick and they've little bit of no response. Acting in good faith? I think not. I've done everything that's been asked of me. All I've asked you for is a meeting. Again, I've, to this point, this has all been contained in this area. It's not my desire to drag your and my town through the mud publicly. Say that again. It is not my desire to drag your and my town through the mud publicly. I haven't gone to the media yet, but if that flip, switch gets flipped, I can't shut it off. I'm asking you for a meeting with a ranking city official, and if you guys want to not say anything, so be it, but I want somebody from Sedgwick there that will answer my question. It's somebody responsible for Sedgwick, not just some flunkie that's gonna listen to me and send me a flesh letter a week later. So that's what I'm asking for. I don't think that's too much to ask. And quite honestly, people, this can go away very quickly. This could all go away very quickly. It should have never gotten this far. And if you haven't figured it out by now, it's, I'm not gonna go anywhere, all right? I'm not gonna go away. So that's basically where we are. Again, I've asked you a question tonight I need an answer for. And by the way, there is a tree on the parkway on State Street that I drive by every time I come to town that appears to be dead. And I can't believe I'm the only one that's noticed it. I hope it doesn't fall on somebody.
No questions at all. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. This is public comment, not public debate or public discussion, so I would.
Okay.
Unless the people want to override the chair, no questions, sir.
I would entertain a question on email if you'd like to send me one. But again, like I said, I haven't gone public with this yet, but I suppose that's the next step. Anyway, I await your response. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council on any matters? New business from the dance? Mr. Bruno?
Thank you, mayor. Last week or the week before, I got a complaint about a resident in a small lot with residential beekeeping, with bees swarming in the neighbor's yard. Our ordinance is mute on that. If there's consensus on the council, if we wanted to discuss, if we wanted to introduce something into our ordinance, either allowing, prohibiting, mimicking the county, I'd be open to that. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderperson Bowring?
Is, sorry, point of order, is it appropriate to weigh in on whether, like with questions or should we, are we just saying, is there consensus to take this up?
I think this evening, we would simply seek consensus as to whether or not to bring the matter back for consideration under a committee of the whole meeting or perhaps a special policy meeting regarding. You would be directing staff to do some research, et cetera, and then we can make a formal decision as to whether or not we want to advance to an ordinance type format for consideration formally.
Since, well, okay, so I have a clarifying question then?
Sure, of course.
If that's okay? So I've been privy to some of this since Alderperson Bruno and I both served the first ward. Does it seem like this is something that we can reasonably address under the nuisance ordinance that we have or does that seem inadequate to the, to the particular situation?
I would, I would defer first and foremost to the knowledge of the code enforcement officer who I know has responded to some, if in fact, this might be the same complaint. It's my understanding the code enforcement officer has visited the property in question.
Okay.
It's my understanding that the code enforcement officer received confirmation from the property owner that they have taken steps to move the locations of the hives further from the property line. There was also statements made that water had been moved as well since bees were attracted to water during the drought. They seem to be attracted to the neighbor's hot tub. All of these things come into play I have not heard of, nor have I sought a update regarding that.
Okay.
But certainly you're more than welcome to contact, obviously, the code enforcement officer, but.
Okay, okay. Okay. I guess, yeah.
And what I would say is, right now, that is our only mechanism.
Exactly.
Because our code of silence nuisance is the only mechanism we would have to do any kind of mitigation.
Okay. I guess I'm open to hearing what other folks on the, on the council think. Thank you.
You're welcome. Does anyone object to additional consideration discussion? Okay. New business?
Approximately eight days ago, there were, there was an incident on the east side of Geneva where three youths moved through the neighborhood. They were masked, and they were intent on, and entering cars that were unlocked, and anything else that they could pick up. The authorities responded because one of the residents turned them in, but they were caught on cameras that residents had. I guess I'm just bringing this to the attention of the community this evening is, is that if you're parking your car in your driveway or on the street, be sure that you lock your vehicle, because if you're not locking it, you're very vulnerable to this type of theft. I believe a few years ago, the same type of incident occurred on the west end of Geneva, and we're not insulated from, from this type of thievery. So a word to the wise, be sure that you're locking your vehicles, really at all times. It's so simple, but there are, there are residents that are not doing that, so just a piece of information for, for everyone's benefit.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else? New business? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the city council meeting. Alderperson Bowring makes the motion to adjourn the city council meeting. All in favor of doing so, please indicate by saying Valkyrie.
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 Valkyrie, or aye. We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. We're gonna transition over to another meeting. It was a pleasure hosting you this evening. Thank you very much. Dinner is on the city of Batavia, so go enjoy yourself.[1781.86][1781.86](laughter) We're adjourned, folks.[1784.15][1784.15](music)